Good evening and welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Regular Session Meeting for Thursday, July 18, 2019, 7:30 PM. A reminder, a recording device will be used during this meeting and we're going to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to open up the meeting tonight with public comments on non-agenda items. And just a reminder, rules of conduct for public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08, the time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Actually, we don't have those yet, so we're going to move on to our Treasurers' Report.
Thank you. Bank account balances as of July 18, 2019 are as follows. General fund checking, $1,994,937.37. General fund investment, $912,558.39. State fund bank accounts, $366,444.98. Referendum open space, $2,675,262.41. Open space, $793,092.4. And traffic impact, $1,632,224.98. And there are a total of 93 checks in need of approval for the general fund, one for the Police Capital Reserve Fund, six for the state fund, and three for the open space fund. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's take a minute and go over the finances to make sure that they're in order.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Scott for the Township Managers' Report.
Thank you. As everybody knows, we're currently experiencing significant hot weather. Past three days, and it's forecast to continue through this weekend. Temperatures that we haven't seen for many years in this area and across the country. Earlier this week, Chester County put in their code-red procedures to offer recommendations for keeping cool during this extended weather event. Places like the Exton Square Mall, public libraries, or municipal building during the hottest times of the day, which is 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And certainly, the extended heat can lead to illnesses from general fatigue to life-threatening illnesses because our bodies are having difficulty coping with the temperatures and regulating body temperature is the big issue. We're asking residents to check on their neighbors, especially if they have elderly or homebound neighbors, those that have very young children. They're most vulnerable to these heat-related stressors. And again, cool locations such as our municipal building, public libraries, Exton Square Mall are good places to go to avoid the midday heat. There's more information on our website and Facebook pages on ways to keep cool during this time. Construction on the sewer and water line extensions for the Mapleview project began on July the 8th, and they're proceeding along Ballinger Road, the sewer line is. Utility installation is part of the Horseshoe Pike-Ballinger Road Intersection Improvement Project. Construction of the stormwater facilities will occur first, once all of the components are on-site. That's why none of that work has started yet. I'm assured by Alan Myers' representatives that they will have the construction completed of the widening, turn lanes, et cetera, on Horseshoe Pike-Ballinger Road and New Street-Warren Lane in the Mapleview development. That will all be done prior to the end of summer. Installation of the traffic signal equipment is anticipated to occur late September or early October of this year, once the poles and mast arms are delivered, as I said last month. That's been delayed because of flooding in Nebraska where those items are constructed. This morning, Brandywine Conservancy and Natural Lands Trust provided a seminar to several staff members. Supervisor Fisher was also in attendance on green stormwater infrastructure, which offers some new and innovative ways to not only manage our stormwater, but restore the quality of our water resources. The Conservancy and Natural Lands Trust joined forces and obtained a William Penn Foundation grant of actually $35 million to look at these issues on a region-wide basis. The Conservancy did a very basic review, or has done a basic review, of our existing subdivision zoning and stormwater management ordinances. They indicated that township's in pretty good shape, but they've identified some areas where they feel some improvements could be made, particularly related to land development planning. Technical assistance is being offered by the Conservancy and NLT for a more in-depth review of our ordinances, language to strengthen the connection between these regulations, as well as offering land development plan reviews. One of the things that was interesting to me was that the Conservancy is also planning to offer technical assistance to homeowners' associations about how to properly maintain their open space, which also helps manage stormwater, as well as similar assistance to our property owners on the operation and maintenance of their onsite stormwater management facilities. We'll be including information in our future mile marker on these programs, because this is all being offered to us at no cost because of the William Penn Foundation grant. And I have, in the packet, I have for Chairman Scribner and Supervisor Winters, the information from this morning's meeting.
And I would just note, because as Scott said, I did attend as well as a couple of our commission members. There were some corrections made when we got into the discussion, so if you look at this document, and it says "opportunities," which are the things they would work on, landscape plan, submittal requirements are not included, the SALDO, we pointed out to them that they are. They looked at only the preliminary plan requirements, not the final plan requirements. So that was unexpected on their part, that we actually did include it, but didn't include it at preliminary. And then it says, "improved residential street design ordinances, reduce street width." She actually said, no, that when they looked at our street width requirements, they were satisfied with them, so that is sort of off the table. But I think it's a significant opportunity for us, at no cost, to get some fine-tuning done. And as you gentlemen know, the stormwater management's becoming an increasing issue, so they have a lot of ideas about how to not only make sure that some things are implemented, the best management practices are implemented, but that we stay on top of the maintenance of these where they appear in some of the communities, some of the developments.
Perfect. Thank you. Luke, for the Assistant Township Managers' Report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This time of year is busy with activities in the park. Start my report with three upcoming events before we meet again. First up, there's a movie on July 20th, that's in two days, "In the Heat." It will be appropriate. It is Christmas in July, the movie will feature The Grinch. On August 9th, we have our final free, family-friendly movie in the park, and that is Wonder Park. That's the name of the movie. Both of the movies are free, popcorn is provided, and they begin just as soon as it's dark for the projector to show something on the screen, so we advertise those at dusk. On August 17th is the Community Day in the park. This is a venerable event, we've been doing this for many years, but there's a couple changes this year I'd like to highlight. This year, there will be four to five free Brown's Houses. The Kids Zone will be free this year, and not a separate ticket to enter, looking forward to that. And that event begins at 11:00 AM on Saturday, August 17th. I hope to see everyone there. Before Community Day begins, we actually have our sixth annual Run for the Parks fundraiser. This event's raised about $35,000 for improvements in the park, and it's also a lot of fun. Registration's open, and registration information can be found on the township's website, or on Facebook, or on the Race menu website. The first event, the Kids 1K, begins at 8:30 AM, and the main event begins at 9:00 AM. Staff has been working to come up with a proposal for a town hall meeting between the Board of Supervisors and area businesses. And I sent a proposal to the board on Friday, and I've made some amendments to my original proposal based on feedback I've received since. This evening, I'm looking for a go-ahead from the board to book the room, print the invitations, order the food, and advertise the meeting. What is included in your packet right now is an amended postcard. What was in my packet on Friday was a blurb for the Fall Mile Marker newsletter, and a mailing list for this postcard. So, can we book this day? Do we have a date?
I'm fine with it.
All right, it's official.
It's official. In favor?
Aye.
Thank you, for your consideration on that. I have a quick update on the contract for trail extension and repairs to the trails in the community park. At this board's regular session on May 16th, the board authorized staff to advertise a contract to make these improvements in the park. The largest portion of this contract would be the construction of a new trail segment from the south and west corner of Phase 2 in the community park to an existing trail stubout built on HOA land in the Hopewell Development on the Ferndale cul-de-sac. This would cross land that the township acquired in fee using open space funds from Leslie Winters and David Permey. You may also recall that late last year, the township received $10,000 in funding from the PICO Green Region Grant to help support this project. My update this evening is that the bid will now be advertised twice, once on July 30th and once on August 2nd. The bids will be opened on August 13th, and staff anticipates making a recommendation to the board regarding the issuance of a contract at your August regular session, which is August 15th. My thanks to Township Engineer Nate Klein for his diligent work on the project. And then lastly, this evening, typically this time of year, I am bothering the board to make a motion to appoint a budget committee for the coming year, because budget time is rapidly approaching. In this case, the Board of Supervisors made its recommendations about the 2020 Budget Committee at your annual organization meeting in January. In the next few days, staff will be soliciting dates and times for the first Budget Committee meeting of the 2020 cycle. So, just a heads-up on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Building Inspectors' Report.
For June 19th, a total of 16 building permits were issued, three zoning permits. Use and occupancy permits issued were 27. 186 inspections were completed. There were 24 failed inspections during the June period. Total fees collected for the month, $9,009,150. Respectfully submitted, Narang King, Building and Code Secretary.
Okay, thank you. And the Roadmaster Report, Matt.
Thank you. During the week of June 24th, the Township Road Department replaced a corrugated metal pipe, which is a crosspipe on East Fisherville Road, just east of the bridge, which is closed in Cowan Township. There are many CMPs, corrugated metal pipes in the township which are failing. Generally, the bottom rusts, and eventually, the soil surrounding the pipe collapses, causing sinkholes. We removed the existing corrugated metal pipe and installed two DWN walls and approximately 30 feet of 24-inch reinforced concrete pipe. The project took four days to complete using township labor. The materials costs were, including tree removal, was $5,913.7. And I've enclosed a couple of photos during construction, and a photo of the corrugated metal pipe that was removed. And I'd like to thank the residents that live west of the work for their patience during the temporary closure. On Thursday, July 11th, bids were open for our 2019 road paving project. The bid is for mill and overlay of Hopewell Road from Rock Raymond to Creek Road, Zinn Road from East Reeseville Road to Hadfield Road, and the entire length of East Fisherville Road. We received two bids, the first from Mecco Constructors for $467,444, and the second from Roadcon for $597,142. Mr. Kyle Turner of Cedarville Engineering recommends accepting the bid from Mecco, and I respectfully request that you accept the bid from Mecco Constructors, Incorporated, for $467,444 for the 2019 road paving project.
Before we do the motion, Matt, just out of curiosity, is that normal for us only to get two bids? I know it's put out there public, but are we usually getting more than that?
It varies from year to year. I think a lot of the contractors, because of the extreme wet weather last year, in fact, I've talked to one of them, and they've got projects left over from last year that they weren't even able to complete. But I think on one other time, we've gotten two, but normally, we get three or four bids.
And what is this in relation to the prices we were getting last year per square yard?
The price from Mecco is less, quite a bit less.
Than what we were paying last year?
Correct.
Okay.
And Roadcon did our paving project last year.
Okay. Good. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid from Mecco Constructors, Inc., in the amount of $467,444 for the 2019 road paving project.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go on to the Police Chief now for the Police Department Report.
Good evening. Report for June 2019. One quick note, on Wednesday night, July 31st, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, we're going to be having a joint effort with the fire company, and it's going to be called Pizza with Public Safety. And Pizza Mia is going to be supplying pizza for the kids and the parents. Anyone who wishes to stop down at the fire company is more than welcome to join us. You're all invited if you'd like to come down. And it's more of just a public gathering and meet and greet type thing to replace our Joe with 5-0 for this month. For the month of June, we had 2,248 recorded incidents. We conducted 220 investigations. We had seven criminal arrests, six summary arrests, one warrant arrest. We completed one juvenile petition. There were five traffic accidents. 215 traffic citations were issued. 53 traffic warnings were issued. And officers logged 10,032 miles of patrol. Training completed for the month. Lieutenant Knight attended a Department of Justice and a Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency training on body-worn cameras. If I could just give you a quick update, as I had mentioned to you, I think it was in February, we had applied for a federal grant to purchase and implement a body-worn camera program. At the time, we were awarded $5,000, and that has since been increased to $13,500. So the training that we attended was to prepare us to complete all the paperwork, get our policies into place, and on how to manage that program once we implement it. The game plan right now is, after we go through our re-accreditation in September, we will be purchasing the body-worn cameras, and we will be putting each officer through training on the cameras, and these complement the in-car mobile video cameras that we already have. So it's going to expand our transparency of everything that we do, and we hope that we'll have that implemented before, I would think, the end of October. So all of our guys will be equipped by that time.
Great.
You have copies of the monthly investigations, the Officer Activity Report. I also have a year-to-date activity report, and I'd also like to just note, every once in a while, you'll ask me how busy we are. We have already exceeded the total number of arrests that we made last year. We have already exceeded it, six months into the year. So the answer is yes, we are very busy. That's all I have.
Thank you. East Brandywine Fire Company's Report.
Okay, East Brandywine Fire Company Report for June 2019. We had 75 total incidents for the month, 29 fire, 46 medical. In East Brandywine Township, we had 11 fire calls, and we had 20 medical calls. We had an average of 12 personnel responding to each fire call. We had four training sessions with an average of 27 personnel at all four training sessions. Things to note about the fire company. We had a significant EMS call on Windermere Court the other night, where without the quick response of the QRS unit from East Brandywine Fire Company, a 47-year-old resident most likely would have lost his life. The fire company got there, the patient had been stung by multiple bees and was in an anaphylactic shock. If it weren't for the quick work of the QRS delivering an EpiPen upon their arrival, the outcome probably would not have been a good... That was kudos to the guys that were on that day. The fire company took part in Dying Town's Good Neighbor Day with our QRS and our ladder trucks standing by. The fire company has become what they call RIT certified, Rapid Intervention Team certified. We're now able to go anywhere that the county deems to a fire and stand by in case a fireman were to become trapped. Only a certain amount of companies in the county have that designation. We're happy to report that Engine 491 is back in service, that's our rescue engine, with all the rescue tools on it. The fire company, you'll note, we had one injury. We were dispatched to a two-alarm house fire in Cowan Township with 26 members responding to the call, and one of our members became dehydrated and had to be transported to the hospital for further care. The other thing I want to bring up to you guys, I know I talked about it last month a little bit, and I went back, and I wanted to take a more definitive look at it. And I talked to you about a gear issue with the amount of volunteer firemen that we have in attendance and the guys coming in. And the gear issue is definitely, definitely a problem for us. We, right now, share gear between daytime guys and evening guys. We share gear with people who are away at college and not able to respond. We share gear with people who go on vacation. We just had two more members walk in this Wednesday, I'm sorry, last Wednesday, who are trained as firefighters, and we're kind of at a wits' end and looking for some help. One of the gentlemen asked me how much money we actually needed, and I had said $50,000. It's not as bad as that. It's more, it's more 10 complete outfits of gear, coats, pants, boots, helmet, gloves, hoods, all come to about $4,200 apiece. And even our frontline guys have torn gear, and it would be like the equivalent of a police officer with a bulletproof vest with holes in it. We can't go buy a pair of pants, and we can't go buy a shirt and have them hemmed and tailored to fit, and it takes three months. So, I don't know if you guys have any suggestions for us. We applied for a grant. The problem with the grant was that not all of our gear is 10 years and older, which Mr. Pierce will attest to the fact that you can't have gear that's 10 years and older, because you can't send the guys to fire school with that. So we're really torn. We don't have the funds to outfit the guys appropriately right now, and I'm just looking for some avenues of help.
So first, obviously, my mindset is, we don't want to turn anybody down who's willing to help us out in the volunteer fire department. The second part of, I guess, I was going to ask you tonight, I've seen the advertising on the Route 30 bypass, and I'm assuming that that's helping you guys with getting more volunteers, because it's showing the big...
Chester County took a big initiative, and they have a huge grant to recruit volunteer firefighters for the county. That has stimulated some interest, but I have to tell you that even without the grant, our doors have been being knocked down, which is just tremendous for us. The influx of people into the community that are moving from other areas that are trained has been phenomenal for us. So while this initiative's helped from the county, they also haven't kind of helped on the back end of that either. You know, their focus is on recruitment to get them into door, and then what you do with them is up to your fire company.
We do have on the agenda discussion, Supervisor Winters is going to tell us about the discussions with West Brandywine Township, and I think what I think should happen is we should get a specific request from you with the amount that you need, the number... You told us now, it's $4,200 per man, the number of sets of equipment that you need, and then we should include that in a discussion with West Brandywine Township to see if we can come up with a basis to provide that.
What, Luke, or Scott, if we needed to act on something quickly, where would we go? I'm not saying tonight, I'm saying...
They'd have to look at the budget.
Look at the budget, yeah.
Find out where... There may be areas where we're behind the budget in terms of spending, and we could free up some funds, but...
Just off the top of my head, without having reviewed our budget, I recall that the figure that we included in our budget as adopted in December of 2018 was more than the figure that was in the multi-municipal interim agreement between the three municipalities. So, in other words, what we've been distributing to the fire company is, per the multi-municipal interim agreement that we had, would be less than the budgeted amount. So from a budget perspective, possible. I need to take a look. Let me just...
Yeah, I...
Get the prices put on next month's agenda.
Yeah, I think...
Actually come here and...
Sooner rather or later was what I was thinking, but I mean, I recollect, we had a discussion with Bonneville Mill over money, and it was right around budget time, and my thought process was, give it to you now, but we may not have as much, you know, to float above next year, but regardless, it sounds like this is an immediate issue. So let's put, Mary, if you don't mind, if you could put this as an agenda item for the, I guess, the next...
Well, I was going to respond to Mr. Fisher, and I think we could put a proposal together with all the prices. I particularly wouldn't be opposed to coming to you at the morning work session and presenting that. That way, we're not waiting the whole month to come back again. You can... You can have the figures in front of you so you can see exactly what we're looking at, and then if that, you guys can give us some direction. Again, I'm not asking, you know, to act on it tonight, but it really is, we're, we don't have any black helmets, which, to put that in perspective, the helmets are for senior firefighters who go inside and fight the fire, like you watched on that. We don't have any helmets to distribute, and they're about two fifty, three hundred apiece. We don't have any frontline gear to give the people to go fight the fire right now. So that's, that's the kind of, I'm up against, but I would rather if I came with a written proposal to you, but at least you guys are aware that that's what we're doing.
And then just another thought while we're, we're discussing this, two things. One, Luke, would you mind putting this on the website to say that we are, you know, met our, met our limits with gear for the fire department? Any and all donations would be appreciated, and put that on the website. The second thing is, do we meet our mile marker quota time?
Actually, I'm...
Underway.
I think it's, the answer to your question is, I think we could still get it in the mile marker for the next issue.
Let's try and do that as well, because again, that can be something that either, A, could be reimbursed to the township if we have already divvied it out, or B, we can figure it out once, once we get to that.
With the, Luke, do you handle the mile, mile marker?
That is a, that's a team effort. Basically, the editor, Diane Sweeney, makes a solicitation to, to department heads and committee chairs.
So why don't the, why doesn't the fire company compose an article? So that way, you'll have a little bit better understanding of, instead of third-hand writing it, and I'll give it to Luke to peruse and put in.
And I would appreciate it if you would put on there the link to your video, because I was at a party this weekend, and, and people were actually watching that at the party, talking about that that was from our township. So it's pretty impressive.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to go to old business. Permission to advertise the Curbside Municipal Waste Recycling Collection, RFP. Luke?
Yeah, this would be the, the fourth thing that we've either advertised or bought of significant value this summer. In front of you is my first draft, and I will say for the record that it has not been reviewed by either Scott or Tom, two, two minds whose opinion I value a great deal because it's hot off the press, but it is a, an RFP for trash and recycle services. The second-class township code requires that municipalities bid out this service at least every five years. Our previous contract was a three-year with two optional one-year extensions, which was awarded to Republic Services. That contract expires at the end of this year, December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. This RFP is slightly different than our previous ones. I'm going to just kind of hit the highlights. First and foremost, it is no longer making the possession and responsibility for processing fees for recyclables on the hauler. The township would pay a tipping fee similar to a tipping fee associated with the, with solid waste as it goes to the landfill. And, and just a little background on, on, on why I feel that is preferable is, the last time we bid this out, recycle markets were very strong. This time, we're bidding it out, recycle markets are very weak. So we were able to lock in a contract based on strong recycle markets that have since gone away. So I'm visualizing this being a variable rate that's, so if, if plastics and steel and copper and the like go up, then, then our tipping fees go down. So that's the, the major change. And also, this bid offers a option for the purchase and assembly and delivery of trash carts. And I have done what is, you know, some will say it's a no-no and an RFP. I've specified a particular make and model of cart. I've done so because we've already been invested in the Toder brand in the form of our recycle carts, and so all of the equipment we use to maintain that is already in hand. The, we actually can't use lids and wheels and, and axles across them because the recycle carts are grant-funded, and the trash ones will be a, a, a purchase from the general fund. But it's, it's still very useful to have just one model of cart. So I, I don't know what to expect. The last time we bid this out, we got four offers. We, we got bids from JP Mosquero, Republic Services, Eagle Disposal, and AJ Blazensky. In an effort to ensure that we get as many bids as possible, this one has a longer period between advertising and closing than previous bids. We should know, we should be in, our staff should be in a position to recommend a hauler by your September regular session.
Okay, just two quick things. The first thing is the trash cans. I know our provider has started dropping off trash cans to a, a, a large area of East Brandywine. Is that, is that for convenience for them, or, and when, when I say, what I'm, where I'm going with this is, when you're going to bid these out, they, for instance, my house, they just dropped one off about a month ago, and it looks like it's brand new, if not under a year old. So they're doing that because I think it's easier for them, and I've noticed it through more and more houses going through the township that have those now, so...
That, that particular service, where they are providing a Republic-branded ninety-six-gallon cart for solid waste, for your trash, is not anticipated in any way in our current contract. There's two ways to look at it. One, out of the generosity of their own hearts, they want to provide carts for people to use. A more cynical view would be that they want as much of the township to be automation-ready as, as possible, where they would go through with the hydraulic arms and can just flip it.
Because I don't see them doing it any other way anymore. I see them going with the arm now.
Because we didn't solicit that, and because that's a relationship between our current hauler and the residents, I can't tell you what will happen on January first with your new cart. If Republic doesn't win the bid, they may take that back. But I, I don't know what their reaction would be under those circumstances, and so you can imagine on January one, we might have a bit of a situation where a whole bunch of people thought that the cart was part of the contract, and it's taken back. There'll be a certain amount of education that'll be necessary on that.
But the other side of this coin is, these guys might be getting these trash cans at a much steeper discount than we're paying, and maybe it's something that we could throw into the contract as well.
Right. Well, that is why I asked for them to, to make a proposal for the purchase and delivery of the carts. I, I thought it would be useful to roll the two things together. For one thing, what we're telling them is, our recycling is automation-ready. The entire community, with a few exceptions, has recycle carts for, for the, for the, the single-stream recyclables. This may be a more lucrative contract to them if, at the same time, they're able to sell us carts, and that means their trash routes are now automation-ready. And so that's why I'm proposing that as an option in this bid. There will be a gap. Even if we get a good, a price we like, and we decide to exercise that bid, the delivery won't be until February, March, the earliest of, of two thousand and twenty. So I, I don't know if I answered your question, because I don't know that I remember it, so my apologies.
No, that was basically it. I just think that a lot of the residents have them. I mean, I, I don't know exactly how many, but if I had to guess, I'd say at least a quarter of the residents have those trash cans by Republic.
Correct. And, and some, some actually also have recycle carts from Republic, because the recycle carts are the ninety-six gallon, and the township offers in the recycle cart, we have thirty-five or sixty-four. And so some people have said, oh, Republic gave me a nice cart, or I don't want the township cart because it's too small.
Okay, and then the next question I had was regarding the tipping scale. So am I right that the tipping would be, they pick up the trash, bring it to the dump, they get weighed, and then that, that is then in turn given to, and, and I guess what I'm getting at is, how are we going to be tracking that to make sure that it's our truck and our, I mean, if, if they have a commute from here, and then they go over to West Brandywine and hit West Brandywine, and then they're taking, it's going to get confusing.
So, so solid waste, the municipal solid waste, trash, Chester County has programmed flows. So depending on where you live, your, your trash can only go to one place. And in East Brandywine Township, the programmed flow is the Lancaster landfill. The, yes, we, we get, they weigh the trucks, there's the tonnage, we pay it, and, and because we receive those weight slips, we're able to track our total municipal tonnage. The contract anticipates that a hauler may have a contract with us in West Brandywine, and want to pick up a couple stops on West Brandywine, and wind up with the bulk item they pick up in West Brandywine being on our tipping fee. So the contract anticipates that's a problem, and actually includes a fine for so doing.
Okay.
So that is, that is forbidden.
Matt, you going to follow the trucks around?
Yeah, I, I don't, I've, I've never followed one of our trucks all the way to the landfill, but that is anticipated and forbidden, and there's a fine associated with doing it.
Okay. Good enough.
So at this point, this is an FYI. It's going to be reviewed by Scott and Tom, and then we'll, we'll see a final...
One of, one of two ways. Either, either this is a draft one for you, and a draft two will appear on a future agenda, and at that point, I would ask your permission to advertise it. Or you may make a motion this evening to advertise it contingent on review by the township solicitor.
I don't have a problem as long as we have him looking at it and before we send it out for bid.
A lot of the information in here that I've looked at so far is boilerplate.
Yep.
But the, the beginning is not boilerplate, and that's what we need to focus on mostly.
There's, there's...
We could approve it in August.
Yeah, and then they can, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to turn it over to...
I'm sorry, which, which was the direction to set?
I'm sorry, Jay said that we'll just approve it in August, so...
Okay, so you would like to see a second draft after review before authorizing advertisement?
Yep, sorry.
And, and after, yeah, after the review of Scott and Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay, so now we're going to get an update on East Brandywine Township Fire Company Municipal Funding Agreement. Jason?
Luke and myself met with the members of West Brandywine regarding the multi-municipal funding agreement for the East Brandywine Fire Company for two thousand and twenty. And after much discussion, it was determined that an agreement is not going to, we let the, to let expire July first, to not have an agreement for next year, but to make a resolution that's going to be shared, but I think, I believe, that's what we kind of agreed at the meeting and bring back to you guys to figure out, you know, if that's okay. And they don't want to, the percentages will be the same as far as the amounts, I'm sorry, not the percentages, the amounts will be the same, and along the increases, but it actually just won't be a contract signed. Be more of a resolution is what was the preference to bring back to the boards. I've heard some of the things were like, for example, if one municipality wanted to give more, donate more to the fire company, it would affect their weight within the agreement itself, and it would not allow it. So that was one of the, one of the topics of discussion, but more so just, they didn't feel that it was, agreement was necessary, we were going to do it.
So it wasn't part, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't part of the agreement that it was a three percent increase, that was the whole reason why it was going to be done long-term?
And that's what it's still going to be long, Luke, you can, you can speak in time, but it was the same increases, the same amounts, but just no contract.
Right. So the, the, the old two thousand and sixteen funding agreement had a mechanism by which a municipality could provide notice of their intent to withdraw. Last year during the budget process, they, West Brandywine Township proposed, they had a, a letter that stated that this was their intent to withdraw from this. They were extending the deadline that was described in the original two thousand and sixteen to provide their notice, saying, look, we, 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 we're going to give more time to make a decision on this. And then the funding that was decided between the three municipalities was written in, just handwritten in blanks on that letter. It was not a product of the formula that the two thousand and sixteen, for, the, the two thousand and sixteen agreement, the, the process that it described. There was a second agreement in the spring of this year, our second letter from West Brandywine that said, we're going to extend the deadline further to provide our notice that we are going to withdraw. And that's the one that expired, either on June thirtieth or July first. Yeah, you're right about that. And so that, that has passed. West Brandywine has provided their notice to, that they intend to, that they have withdrawn from the multi-municipal funding agreement. I think that the, the conversation went from that point to what elements of that old agreement are, are worth preserving in some other form. And, and I think that there is some agreement on the mechanism by which the fire company's budget requests are, are handled by a multi-municipal committee, so that the fire company needs only make a presentation to one committee instead of, instead of three. And also, there was, you know, the, well, there's perhaps an outcome where we have a, a price from each municipality written down, and an escalator for each year for a five-year period assigned to that price, so that we would have, that everybody could anticipate what their budget is for the, for the next few years.
Okay, so, so they've, they've removed themselves from the equation of the agreement, yet I guess you may not be suited to answer this, but it would be the fire department. Are they continuing to make the payments that they were agreeing to make under that agreement?
Can I interject a second? So we are just in receipt of their full agreed amount that they agreed to last year. We received that check last week for the full amount that was in the, I guess you're calling it multi-municipal agreement. Since the meetings are at the same time, I haven't attended West Brandywine's meeting, but they had a presentation over there a few months ago that they actually put an EMS tax in that has nothing to do with us. They're actually going to put their own ambulance service in West Brandywine Township at their township building. At that meeting, they reaffirmed that they were committing to a hundred and twenty thousand with three percent increases over the next few years. So I don't know how that played into the discussion that you had with them, Luke, but that's how we understood, and we are in receipt of this year's money.
Okay, so now we have our own EMS at East Brandywine.
We have a QRS at East Brandywine that probably will not be needed in West Brandywine to the amount that it is, because they're going to park this ambulance at West Brandywine Township.
That's what I was getting at.
With a one, one percent tax to West Brandywine residents to help supplement that.
Okay, that was my question, because I was curious on, for instance, Freedom Village, would their EMS handle those calls, majority of them, going forward? I'm, I'm looking out for you guys more so than anybody else.
So what it looks like is that the QRS itself will not respond to Freedom Village any longer once that ambulance is in service. Because some of West Brandywine Township is right up the road, for EMS emergencies, the QRS will be dispatched still to EMS emergencies for proximity, will still be the closest unit, but the numbers will drastically decrease for EMS responses since you're not going to be going to Freedom Village.
Right, okay, good.
I wanted to answer what I think your question was, and I think it's very unfortunate that West Brandywine is doing this, because the whole reason for that agreement was to give the fire company some stability and know that it had a predictable source of funding that they could use for their long-range planning. And to go to a resolution means that when the board changes in West Brandywine Township, they can change their position, and so there's no, you, you put the fire company back in, in a position where they have to be insecure for, from year to year, they have to go back and, and determine what, whether they're going to get fully funded or not, so...
So let me interrupt you real quick. Is there a way that we can bring, who is it, Wes Euclid, is it?
Upper Euclid.
Oh, I'm sorry, Upper Euclid. Is there a way that we can bring back the agreement between ourselves and them, and West Brandywine can just be a feeder, and they, they get what they get?
Upper Euclid is such a, a small part of it, and they've been very cooperative over the years.
Oh, no, no, I meant just for, for guaranteeing funds.
It does, it's, that, they're, they're such a small, they make such a small contribution that...
Upper Euclid's contribution is, I believe... Upper Euclid's contribution is, I believe, $15,000. And for instance, just last month, we had two calls in Upper Euclid. For the amount of calls we go up there and what we receive from them, it's a terrific amount, it's a terrific amount. So, he's right when he says they're just, tell us what you want, within reason, and they pretty much fund it.
So, there's no real reason, we never, the reason for the agreement had nothing to do with Upper Euclid, it was all about West Brandywine. Where I was going with that is just so that we can show our support to the fire department, say, hey, you know you got it from us, you know you got it from Upper Euclid and you don't have to, you know, come to us every year, but you can continue to go to West Brandywine and try to work it out with them. And that's what I was alluding to, so that there is stability from our two townships.
Well, I just would reiterate, at this moment, there's no agreement of any type. That 2016 agreement allowed for a municipality to withdraw by providing notices to the other municipalities by November of the year they're in. And we had two cycles of extensions, one to May and then one to July, and that period has now passed. So, the 2016 multi-municipal agreement no longer exists. The conversations we're having now are talking about what kind of successor arrangement can we come to? And, you know, I, that 2016 agreement had some features that I think everyone would agree was a vast improvement over the, what was there before, nothing at all was there. And among those vast improvements, perhaps I'm crossing a line into, you know, my personal opinion here, but I think that the communication was vastly improved. There was one presentation on the needs for the fire company to a room that was representative of all three municipalities. And I personally would like to see that arrangement preserved.
That's what I'm.
I think the other significant factor was that we created a timeline so that it was early on in the budget process, so that the fire company wasn't sitting on pins and needles in December, waiting to see what budgets were approved and then find out how much they were gonna get.
I don't know if Luke, I believe East Brandywine Fire Company and our chief, Vince D'Amico, just walked in, but if I look at what they have committed to us and what they have said, unless Luke has heard otherwise, I would anticipate for 2020, $123,600 committed from them. That's the 120 this year plus a 3% increase. That's what we're operating under the assumption that we're gonna get from them, regardless of whether we say that's in a resolution. I agree with Jay, the comfort zone is not there any longer if they're gonna back out of the agreement. But if what we've been hearing from them is that they're committed to this 3% increase, then it looks like our budget will be 123,600 from them, unless Luke, you and Jason were at the meeting, what did that seem from you guys?
And let's not forget that they arrived at that figure not really based upon the formula.
Right, arbitrary.
Yeah, they just said, this is how much we wanna spend and that, in my recollection, is that amount is less than the formula would have required them to contribute. So, we're, in my opinion, we're back to them not contributing their fair share.
But, I guess where I'm going at and we'll wrap this up is, by having two townships in an agreement, we're committed to giving, you don't have pins and needles with us. If there's a problem and there's a downfall at the West Brandywine, then at least you already know you're getting your, you know, your percentage increase from us and you're getting your guaranteed yearly stipend amount, then you would only have to have those meetings with West Brandywine.
I think the fire company is committed to what Luke said, the joint presentation of our budget. We've always been transparent with that and we always can try and justify, not try, but we can justify what our budget line is. And, you know, we look forward to meeting with Upper Euclid, East Brandywine and West Brandywine to present that. If our hands are tied that it's only to this amount of money from West, I'm not quite sure what more we could do except stomp our feet and say, what am I gonna do about it? But, we could, we certainly are open to presenting our budget to the multi, you know, every township, just the way Luke said.
I think the answer to your question is that the agreement between two parties, when there are really three parties in the mix, doesn't really accomplish what we had tried to accomplish, because you're, they're somewhere near 45% of the total contribution. If you don't have them in the agreement, then it doesn't really, it doesn't give them any security to have Upper Euclid and us agree, because we've never been the problem, so, anyway.
All right, can we, we'll readdress this and again next week, or I'm sorry, on the morning session that we're gonna, Mary, if you don't mind, putting that on there, so we'll rehash this, but give us some time to, if you can get your, get together for the website. And like I said, the link to the video would be awesome.
And the pricing too, proposal for what you need now?
Yeah, the gear proposal's a separate issue than this budget.
Yeah, but I think that we can get closure to this by the next meeting.
And I do think, while that old agreement has broken down, there is still a good relationship in this and I'm sure Supervisor Winters, as the township's representative to that group, if we can come to some sort of successor agreement, may present that to the entire board in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the new business for the estates of Dalen Forge, partial dedication of Spine Road. And we're gonna, Giovanna Raffielli? All right, perfect, she's the council for the Metropolitan Development Group.
Good evening, Gio Raffielli is fine, that's usually what I go by. I'm here on behalf of the developer of the Dalen Forge Estates. We started a dialogue with township staff a couple weeks ago regarding our request to do a partial dedication of Nichols Mill Road, which is the spine road that goes into the Dalen Forge development. The request was initially driven by, at our annual meeting and over last winter, residents at Dalen Forge were asking for bus service during the school year. And because they're private roads and they're not top paved, the school district would not come up into the development. We looked at the development and looked at the amount that we have constructed to date in this one particular area and realized it would probably be a very beneficial that we could go through the process of what we would either phase dedication or partial by top paving Nichols Mill Road up to an area where I showed on the diagram that I submitted in our materials. And with that, we would also top pave three of the HOA roads, which would be Tucker Drive, Powell Court and Harner Court. And we would do that so that the school district would have a very clear way to make a U-turn around in and out of the development. As part of that as well, we talked with the township engineer and the Chester County Conservation District about converting three of the stormwater management facilities at this time. Those would be Seepage Drainage Area 5, Drainage Area 6 and Drainage Area H. And the reason for that is that all the houses in those areas that drained that, primarily all of that construction, if not all of it, is completed and it would be an appropriate time, once we're doing the top paving, to convert those areas to their final form. That's another thing that the township has, not the township, I'm sorry, the residents have brought to our concern in some areas. Can we go ahead and finally convert these areas now? They're still in their construction state to some extent, a lot of them are pretty well stabilized in areas. The response we got from our engineers and an initial indication from the township engineer and the county conservation district that they agreed that it was an appropriate time, that if we were doing all this, we could do it at that time. The way we would envision this process going, if it was agreeable to the township, would be to initially start and get punch lists from your consultant township engineer, as we would do with any requests for dedication. If we were able to address those punch lists, then we would come through and make a request for dedication. I should step back one minute. After the staff meeting, I had reached out to the school district and the township manager was also helpful in talking to the school district, because residents had contacted him. And at the plan commission meeting that I attended last week, we had just learned that day that the school district did visit the site and they said that they would be in a position to consider bus service if the private roads were top paved as well and if there was no parking on the three HOA roads and that the trash cans would be placed on the curb and not in the street. At that time, I said I would look at our HOA declaration, because we're still in control of the declaration and the plan, and see if we would have any problems with amending rules and regulations or doing that. We do have the ability under the HOA documents to amend the rules and regulations. The HOA documents themselves are silent on parking, they don't permit it nor not permit it. The plans itself don't have any special restriction or non-restriction on parking. We meet the single-family parking requirement in the driveway and the garage, so we're not losing any parking spaces at that. So, as a condition of the township, considering the partial dedication, we would accept as a condition that we would comply with the requests of the school district and that we would do what was necessary to amend the HOA and meet with the homeowners to talk to them about that before amending it and go through with those conditions.
Real quick, what about signs? Would no parking signs be going up, even if they were temporary? Because I think you're gonna have a hard time convincing people to keep their cars off the roads, you know, and then.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about, and we're, I have a draft of amended rules and regulations. We could put parking signs up. It would, the way that we envisioned it and the way I started drafting it was, no parking on the three roads where Scott has the arrows going on those portions.
Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
Right.
And we could put it that it could be lifted by the association at the time of dedication, of the full dedication of Nichols Mill Road.
Because I just envisioned a contractor coming over to do work, not paying attention to parking there. And next thing you know, the bus turns around and you get stranded children.
Right, absolutely. I've been, I went to the development tonight before the meeting and once last week, because I wanted to see what the parking was like, just so I can get an idea. Now, this was at 6:30, there was one car parked on the street. And it's a good thing to go look at it, because it always gives you a better idea. There was one car parked on Tucker Drive and there was none on Harner. And then Powell Court, the cars were just parked around the cul-de-sac and they're island cul-de-sacs. So, the bus would never be able to turn, they're landscaped island cul-de-sacs, so I don't think a bus would ever be able to turn around there anyways. So, the parking in those two smaller cul-de-sac bulbs at the end did have cars in one of them, not in the other. But, yeah, I understand that that would, you know, the enforcement of that. What we talked about at plan commission was the HOA does have the ability, after we enact the rules and regulations and we post signage, to give, we can impose fines, we can impose towing requirements. We can also give permission to the East Brandywine Township Police to enforce, I guess, the law, the rules and regulations on our private roads as well as the association. That's part of it.
We're running into a problem with that right now, so I don't know if that's.
I'm just saying, we had that ability, I mean, it's been done before. But, we understand, I mean, we haven't gone to, we haven't gone to the HOA as of yet, other than they asked us to investigate it. I mean, the residents did and we said we would, and this is, you know, the solution. So, it's for a limited time, it's for a limited amount of people, it benefits, you know, that good part of that community. So, given the fact that there is available, I mean, the parking that they have in their garage and their driveway, I think it would work during those timeframes.
And you don't have a problem with dedicating roads or top coating these roads with the construction equipment still going up and down there?
Well, in this, you know, we would have to manage that. I mean, we've done it in other instances, which is why we supplied an example of a maintenance agreement in another municipality. We've gotta manage the builder and their construction traffic, we have to get them on board and they are initially agreeable to do that. The construction in that particular area is almost completed. Our site construction for, do you have the overall development, Scott? Just to, I'll just give you an overview, just so you know what the construction is for the whole development.
And the reason why I'm asking these questions is, while he's pulling this up, is I know the homeowners have the concern of what's going on, but what the homeowners need to understand is if things are rushed on this and problems arise from construction equipment damaging the road and the drainage basins, the stormwater basins, once the builder gets his escrow, it's all on the HOA. So, they may have been quick to hurry to get the work done, but then if problems arise later on, it's their bill, not the builder's.
Well, I mean, the top paving of the road, first of all, there's gonna be no construction traffic going in on those three HOA top paved roads. Those houses are all constructed. So, for the HOA top paved roads, that's not, that's not really an issue, because there's no heavy construction traffic going in there. The township road that's partially dedicated, we're agreeing to extend the maintenance period, so we would be ultimately responsible. So, you know, you'll accept dedication, you know, right before the school year, let's say, hopefully, in a perfect world. That maintenance period would keep going, it wouldn't end in 18 months. It would keep going until we have that trigger date in the maintenance agreement that would say, okay, now your 18-month starts. And usually, that trigger date is about when the rest of the site, either the rest of Nichols Mill Road or, it turns into a different name, I'm sorry, the rest of the spine road is dedicated, or at such time as you would accept dedication under your ordinance over 75% complete or something of that nature. So, with respect to the stormwater basins, I know this, just being a developer council for years now, stormwater has changed each year, it becomes more of an issue. And a lot of us as developers have gotten much better at notifying HOAs and telling them the stormwater management responsibilities, partially because our NPDS permits require all these notices. You know, you gotta record it at the beginning, you gotta record it at the end, you gotta record it in the middle with the HOA and you gotta record it every time you transfer a lot. So, the management of the HOA basins, I think, is eventually getting better by the disclosures and our management company. At the same time, though, when a basin is signed off on and converted, in this instance, I mean, they are functioning. And all intents for these three areas right now, they seem to be, in a part from talking to the engineers, that they are gonna continue to function, they're draining well, all the houses are completed. So, I don't think we're rushing the basin conversions, because I'm not asking to convert a basin like the Route 282 basin by Lot 1 at the bottom. We're not asking to convert that at that time. There's still construction going up for houses that drain down there, so that one's not the right time. So, we're trying not to rush converting stormwater management facilities that aren't ready to be done.
Is there any silt going into those basins right now, do you know?
In the, in the ones we're converting? I can't say 100%, I can tell you that our engineer from DL Howl, who did the NPDS permit amendment, and I know that your engineer has looked at it and the county conservation district. So, they are on, they agree that it's appropriate to convert. I can't say whether there's any or not, I can just tell you that the, I can go over and say, the houses that are there that are draining to it are constructed. But, we understand the concerns with construction traffic, but like I said, for those HOA roads, there's no heavy traffic coming through there. Okay? I was just gonna.
Go ahead.
No, 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 I was just gonna say, real briefly, the last part of the site improvements for the, I guess, that circle of houses that is not, where there's not any houses sold or anything yet, that's, those site improvements should be done, hoping by October. They're underway now, so that a lot of the site improvement contract will be done in that area. It will just be the house construction. And then, the sewage treatment plan is scheduled to be completed and a lot of that heavy work is done by December. So, and then we figure the build-out of D.R. Horton, if they continue to build and sell as they are, would probably be in 20, 2020.
What I was gonna say was Nate Klein, our township engineer, checked with Joseph Franco. from the county conservation district, and Mr. Sefranco told Nate that the two basins that are being considered to be converted are, it's, as she said, appropriate for that to be done, there's work that would need to be done to convert those, to remove the silt and sediment that's built up in it now, and then put it at its final elevation. The other basin down near Creek Road, still...
Right.
Matt, do you have any comments about this? Because you're in a better position than any of us to...
The only, the only problem I can see right now is winter maintenance, whether we can possibly get an agreement...
For example?
To access that section of roadway through the development. If not, it's, it's a pretty good trek from Hopewell Road out to...
Go all the way around?
Yeah.
To come up from Creek Road. But you're, you're comfortable with the idea of, because my understanding is the construction traffic is supposed to be coming in off of Creek Road. I don't think it always does, but, because we've had some complaints about that.
That's what I was, I put that in my notes, too. I think it, it would be Whoville to put up a sign, not only saying no parking, but no construction vehicles at that entrance.
Yeah, I, I am gonna, I don't know if you can take all construction vehicles off...
I think you're gonna limit, though, if I, if you're, if you're a tractor-trailer, you're getting ready to turn in there and you say, oh, I gotta go to the other, you know what I mean? Maybe it will stop.
I, I don't know if the other entrance is appropriate for the biggest ones.
The settlement agreement requires that once the, the Spine Road, which is Nichols Mill and Seven Springs roads, once those are paved, the construction traffic is supposed to come in off of Route 282, not Township Road.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I, I have a couple thoughts. The advice that we always give is you don't take dedication of the roads until the construction is finished. Obviously, you know Township Road and Hopewell Road, they're, they're just not going to be coming in that way. You're, you're going to have concrete trucks, significant numbers of concrete trucks, you know, trucks loaded with trusses, tractor-trailers, and you're going to get significant wear on that wearing course. So the difference, even if they extend the maintenance period, when you get a road today, you're getting a brand-new wearing course, and you get your eighteen-month maintenance bond. And, and Matt could speak to this better. I don't know what the average life of the wearing course is, will be on this road, but in this case, they're going to put the wearing course on, and then it's going to be subjected to significant traffic from heavy vehicles. So you're getting, even if they extend the maintenance bond, and I don't know how long they would intend to extend it, it's not likely that that wearing course is gonna fail, even during a thirty-six-month maintenance period, but you're receiving what I would view as an inferior product, because it's been subjected to heavy truck traffic. So that's something that you should...
Early in its life.
Right, that's something you should keep in mind.
Instead of being a twenty-year...
And what I would ask, and I would, I would ask, and I think I put this in an email, see, I mean, right now, everyone's driving on the binder course. All the people that live there drive on the binder course, it's typical to drive on the binder course. I would suggest you go to Craft, and the school district can say, is there some reason why the buses can't drive on the binder course? Because that would make more sense to me. I don't know, the school district does have sort of arbitrary policies on this, from my experience. But I think you need to think about that issue, that you're going to end up getting a wearing course, a final product road, that has wear on it that you normally would not get. And I think it's probably unrealistic to think that that truck traffic, and I don't know, I think you're gonna get a lot of people complaining, live on Township Road, if you, if you send them down that way.
Oh, we can't, no, I don't...
I don't think they can even do it.
No, I, my concern was that they absolutely shouldn't be coming in on Township Road.
Right, right.
They do...
Right.
On some occasions.
They're, when you continue to come in Creek Road, they're gonna pull up that hill, that's another thing, the heavy truck traffic's heading up that hill on that wearing course, and it's gonna take wear, that it wouldn't, you wouldn't ordinarily have.
And I, I don't disagree, it's gonna be, yes, you're gonna get it, well, you're getting it the same amount of time, but I don't know from a, from a top paving standpoint, I mean, the binder's been in, it's actually, it looks really good, I, you know, from what I can tell, driving on it and looking at it. But the, the, the top coat, I mean, usually lasts, and then you can ask your roadmaster, I mean, it's, it's not that it's gonna last, you know, for five years, and you, you know, we've used two of them up with, with some construction traffic. We're probably talking by the time, I mean, the, the site construction for the heavy stuff will be done this year, and it's gonna be the house construction that's gonna lag behind, which will be about another year.
And all the roads are gonna be dedicated to the township, and so...
No.
No, just the Spine Road.
That's what I thought, okay.
Yep, just the Spine Road.
Because it confused me when we stood, go ahead, Chief.
Can you address what Tom said about the, the school district? Is, is the school district just dug its heels in and said, no way, are we gonna send a, a school bus up there?
You know, I haven't, other than their response, the first time they responded with this was last week, right before I came to the plan commission, and actually, they responded to Scott, not me, but they did go out and look, so I haven't gone back to them since what they, they said what their conditions would be, I was trying to work out their conditions.
Was one of their conditions that it be a final coat on the roads, or was it...
That was always the precursor to any school district I've, I've ever dealt with.
They did, Apple Cross, they, Apple Cross just paved their roads recently, and they, they, the school board, the school district was running buses up and down there, so I, I would have to assume, if there was enough discussion with them, that they would, they would...
Then the other thing, I'm sorry, that I neglected to mention, is that you need to think about the conflict between the school buses, the kids, and all the construction vehicles. I mean, I don't, I don't know that there's a lot of construction vehicles going in and out of there during school bus time, but that's a consideration. Now, it may be more dangerous for the kids to be walking down to Creek Road.
Yeah, but you're already dealing with that at the bottom, at the bottom of the hill, with people trapped, parking on the Spine Road and stuff like that. I mean, again, we're coming to a portion of the development where there won't be any construction traffic. Yes, they're gonna have to travel on the Spine Road, but you're not gonna be having construction vehicles in the area where we're asking for dedication. It's gonna be a way where the school buses aren't gonna be going.
Understood.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think we do have to reach out to, to the Craft Bus Company and, and try to, I mean, it's already, they've set precedence by doing it in Apple Cross, I can't see why they can say no for, for new development, especially when the dedication is gonna be partially taxpayers' money as well for, for the Spine Road, for maintenance on, on heavy equipment. So I, I don't know, you know...
Well, I would ask you also to consider that we haven't talked about what the life of the wearing course, you know, what the top coat is gonna be. So, I mean, if there's some way, if, if you feel as though you're getting, you know, a year's less, I mean, which is what we're really talking about, a year's less of, of wear on that portion of the road, I mean, those things can usually be discussed or negotiated in some form of our maintenance and dedication agreement. I mean, we, we still are gonna have this maintenance period, so if something happens to the road, or you guys say, you know, there's so much wear on here, we need X, Y, and Z, you're gonna have that ability in the agreement.
I think it's gonna be very hard to quantify what that wear is, but I, I agree with Supervisor Scribner that the, I think the first choice is to go back to the school district and say why all of a sudden, try, try to get them to agree to come up there on the wear course, and then...
I think we should communicate with them.
Right.
Well, that's fine.
All right, so...
I'm just gonna say, if we're gonna do that, we're not gonna end up converting the basins, because that's all something that we would mobilize at the same time. It just makes the, it just, they go together, it just makes sense.
Right, okay. All right, so I guess that will be our, our homework assignment?
Contact Carl Croft...
Okay.
Tomorrow. And then, gee, I'll be in touch with you what I...
That's fine.
What I hear from them.
We'll see what they come, and we'll go from there.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have any public comments on agenda items from tonight?
Michael Waggoner, 241 Jeffers Road. Chief, you said that you've already hit your, your goal, or actually, the quantity of, how do you phrase that? You've already hit your amount of...
Total arrest numbers for last year.
Less than seven months. In your opinion, why do you think that is?
Why do I think that is? It has to do with a lot of our transient traffic, we've had a lot more drug arrests this year, so we've sent a number of officers to some specialized training for drug interdiction, and instead of making use of that training, we're just, we're busier in call volumes and whatnot, so it's, it's a combination of a lot of things.
So what can the township do for you?
Just keep supporting the police department, and if I, you need additional ma, I mean, the one need that we have right now is we, we're most likely gonna need another detective, because our detective is just a little overwhelmed right now, so...
Is that part of your budget for this year, or for next year?
It's not part of this year. That's something we're gonna discuss, you know, in the budget prep for next year.
Okay. Joe, what is the total budget for the, for the fire, fire department for East Brandywine Township for the year? Off the top of your head, just a rough number. Million, million-two?
No, I believe in, Chief, I don't know if you can help me with this, I think last year's budget was about four-hundred-and-ninety thousand, for, between four-fifty and five-hundred. I believe, that's, that is literally off the top of my head.
And is that the money, is that, is that all the monies that the, the township gives you, or is that through fundraising and so on, on your part?
It's, that comes from a combination of the three townships' contribution, as well as our mailer, which is about a fifteen to twenty percent return rate on fundraising itself.
Would you find it more proactive if the township funded the, the fire department one-hundred percent?
I would love that.
Gentlemen, is there a way that we can fund our, our fire department one-hundred percent? So we get rid of the time and energy we're trying to spend now to try to collect money from other townships? And if we need to, we can always bill them at a later date for what a service that we need. I, as a resident, don't care who comes to put out the fire, I just want someone to put out the fire. I'm sure everybody in this room is still...
Would you, as a resident, care if you were paying for the fire company to go to West Brandywine Township and put out fires?
That's not what I'm saying, Jay.
That's exactly what you're saying. If we a hundred percent fund the fire, and we don't get a contribution from West Brandywine Township, forty-five percent of the calls last year were in West Brandywine Township. West Brandywine Township should be paying forty-five percent, or, or some, we, we arrived at a formula that wasn't based just on calls, but they have to be pay, they have to pay their fair share of supporting the fire company.
Correct, and that's why the statement I made, maybe we need to charge them for each trip that we make, above and beyond the fact that if we do fund our fire company one-hundred percent, we don't then have to worry about if we're gonna get the money or not. So, but I do, yes, they should pay. Everybody, if you're gonna use our services, they should pay, but we need to make it a little bit more simpler for our fire company to do what it needs to do, and not have to worry about pulling its hair out to try to have to fund itself. And that's, that's so...
That's why we spent a considerable amount of time coming up with an inter-municipality agreement, and came up with a formula, they had input into it, and to, to achieve that goal.
Okay, but again...
They backed away from it.
Above and beyond that, if they don't have to do any additional fundraising, like, they don't have to do their barbecue, they don't have to put out their mailer, is there a way that we can limit the time that they have to spend to do that by funding them with whatever we need to fund them? Their job is to put out fires, their job is not to collect money or to find money or funding for that, for their company. We need a fire company that is responsive and has the equipment that it needs, that is up to date, so they can do their job, just like you guys need the technology and the equipment that you need to do your job. Same thing with the police department, we fund them, we should find a way to fund them also.
Wait, and, and I'm curious, I didn't understand, were you saying East Brandywine Fire Department is East Brandywine's only fire department, and that we, we're a hundred percent East Brandywine, or are you saying you continue to go to West Brandywine?
No, continue, continue and do what you wanna do with the municipalities, but let's find a way that we don't have to always rely on whether or not East, West Brandywine's gonna give us the money that we need. We know that eventually they will, and they will get it increased when we have to yearly, but is there a way that we can minimize the amount of extra work the fire company has to do to raise the additional funds that it needs to operate? Plain and simple. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for agenda items discussion?
Can we come up?
Yes, please.
Only reason why, Bruce, is because Luke, Luke gets cranky if he can't see you on the video and...
I didn't get out my sign.
This question goes to Matt. A couple weeks ago, a couple meetings ago, we were talking about the Echo Dell and the trees that needed to be removed along there. Have we made any progress with that?
No, that's gonna be a fall project. We're extremely busy with everything we have going right now.
So is the township gonna take care of it, or do you have to go to each, each resident to ask for help with the tree removals, the green ash that's dying from the ash board?
The direction from the board was that we would go to each individual property owner and request fifty percent of the cost for the tree removal.
Okay, it is, it is a, an insect that's spreading throughout the township, killing all the, all the ashes, and it'll be good to remove it as soon as possible.
Yeah, and I think we were talking about, some of the trees were a hundred percent gone, some of them were, were partially gone, but here's the next question, I don't know the answer to this. If you take away the habitat that the, that the elm beetles are eat, you know, the trees that they're eating...
Are they gonna go get other ones?
Right.
Sure.
And so...
But these are all lined along the street, and they're becoming a hazard. I don't know which ones are on properties, which ones aren't, do you have to do a, who's gonna pay for the survey then?
Well, and they were, that was what it was, it was the trees were directly...
On the property line.
On the property line, so that, that's why...
But nothing's really happened at this point, like this...
Right, the way we left it was, we would, we would definitely take ownership, but then we couldn't take a hundred percent ownership, being that they weren't a hundred percent on township property.
Right now, nothing has happened in the sense of...
Correct.
Homeowners not contacted yet, or anything.
That I don't know.
Yeah, no, they haven't.
Okay, I was just...
Thank you.
The sooner you can get rid of them, the better.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, just a reminder, the board did meet in executive session at the last meeting for personnel and legal matters, and the board, I believe, will be meeting this evening for personnel, for legal matters. Do I have a notice to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.